Okay, seeing that it's seven o'clock, we'll open the meeting for the Town Halifax Planning Board. The meetings begin at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room for Thursday, June 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and it can be viewed on YouTube. Again, we're located the Selectmen's Meeting Room in the Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. The time is at 7:00 requested by the Planning Board. Attending tonight's meeting is our members Amy Troop, Bert Gaynor, Tom Millius, and a welcome to our newest member, Bruce Sylvester.
Yes, welcome.
What's that?
Welcome to Bruce.
Yep. Okay, let's see, our... Oh, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second to accept the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
And one abstention, Amy Troop. Okay, our first appointment is a continuation of PSPR 25-3, 539 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review for the Plant Nursery. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Very good.
Good.
Your name and address, so we can...
John O'Connell, my family is 539 Plymouth Street, right down here across from the station. Just coming because we had not been back in a while, I didn't realize that you had to keep coming back to just make sure that you guys are moving forward. We do have an engineer working on the stuff. I can tell you what we got going on right now if you'd like, just so I can keep it moving.
Sure.
The wetland scientists have begun their initial research, scheduled their visit to the site for the investigation for the vegetation soil conditions, and they will flag any resources the week of June 9th, which is coming up next week. Surveyors have done their background check on the property, they will be onsite shortly after. The resources areas have been delineated. Also, we have located the existing conditions and resource areas onsite. We're performing test sites to better understand the underlying soil conditions in order to plan any necessary drainage, which was what was asked of us. After these are all done, we'll be putting together the design plans and submitting to Conservation for the notice of intent, and this will all work with you guys as well.
Okay, where are we time-wise with this application?
I wanted to get to our files, but I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just Danielle, what she saw.
I want to say it was April we went to the zoning board first.
Yeah, you have an application in with us, and I believe that we extended that last meeting, and I don't know whether or not you accepted that or not, Danielle?
She's low zone.
Hell, there we go.
You got dated and all stuff?
Do you know what the dates are?
Hold on one sec.
Caesar!
Did you say you were the owner of the property?
That's my family, yes.
Okay. Is Pam your mom?
No, no, you know Pam...
She worked for me when she was 17 years old.
Oh, really? Oh, wow. No, that would be my brother-in-law's mother.
Oh, okay.
How come we can't get to the files?
I don't know. Danielle, any way we can get to the file here and check some dates, see what we're looking at?
Our computer guy is no longer with us.
I know. Get Brendan back here.
Where's Caesar's out there?
He just stepped out, said he had to go to Plymouth.
Perfect.
Alright, sorry, there are 30 days from June 1st.
Thirty. Thirty days from June 1st. So it sounds like we're gonna need a little bit more time, and my suggestion is that we... Do you want to do another extension and give us another 30 to 45 days so that we don't have any issues?
I'd extend it to August at least.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe if we gave him 45 days, did you say, Danielle, that it was the end of June? Did you... Can you say the last date again, please?
30 days from June 1st.
Okay, so July 1st. So they'll give us until August 16th, and that would give us possibly four meetings, really three.
Yeah, because it sounds like you got a lot of work to do, guys getting out there.
Yeah, I want to make sure it's done right so we don't have many issues and cross all the t's to all the y's.
Forty-five days good with you, or do you think...
I'll be honest, I don't, I've never had to work with an engineer for this stuff. I would assume that maybe they get that done in 45 days.
Let's do the 45 days and keep your eye on the time.
I will.
Pick a meeting date, I think really just 45 days.
What about August 7th?
Done.
Yeah, I think that works better. And if you're not ready, you need to contact us to ask for an extension.
Prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
And then it'll come in and we'll do, okay.
So are you asking us for our 45-day extension?
Yeah, I have a 45-day extension.
I'll make a motion to have SPR, up the SPR 25-3, 539 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review, have a 45-day extension from July 1st, 2025, to August 16th, 2025.
And schedule the next appointment at August 7th, correct?
Yep.
And then we'll go from there, at least we have you on the books.
Awesome.
And we're gonna be, or we just need you to agree to it, so... Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, there's a motion on the floor to grant a 45-day extension to PSPR 25-3, 539 Plymouth Street in Halifax for the Plant Nursery. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll ask for a voice vote, Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Tom?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. That didn't even hurt, huh?
Not yet.
Not as bad as I thought. We had the letter, I was like, oh crap. I didn't know we had to have a key phone, and I thought we just waited for the engineers, I didn't realize that it was one, that it'd take that long, and two, that we had to have a key check.
Well, it couldn't take longer, if it does, again, just stay in touch.
It's actually gonna be August 15th because I didn't count the 31st day in July.
Oh, okay. I'll be here on the seventh, either way.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you.
Maybe have him sign first.
I need you to see it, right on the top there.
If we all sign, I'm trying to get them popping.
Yeah, that makes sense.
First official act. Yep, this is the first one, Bruce, that's it.
Frank.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait till she gets back.
I'll wait, yeah, gonna wait for coffee.
I was gonna say I gotta get the coffee.
I don't know why I thought we had the industrial part going for a time, but I guess we don't.
No, no, I mean, that's the only appointment we have.
It's nice with the birds in the background, isn't it?
Yes.
Here you are.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Take care.
Are we gonna reorganize?
I think now that Brendan Elliott has actually put in his written resignation, because the board of selectmen, from what I understand, can't fill the open position temporarily until the acceptance of written resignation. I texted with Brendan yesterday, and he said he was gonna email one off, so I think it'd be better to reorganize once we have a full vote, unless somebody has any other thoughts.
Well, usually after an election, we do reorganize.
Right.
So that is just my thought on that. Also, are we gonna put out on the town electronic boards that we're looking for an open seat to be filled by the planning boards?
The last, I was told it was, what do they call it, the Job Bank, is that what they is?
Town Bank?
The Town Bank, yes. It was out there in a... I don't know, I haven't checked with them in a while, so I don't know how many have actually put in Florida at this point, but...
Well, we should still advertise it.
Oh, 100%, yep.
That's something the selectmen would handle.
What's that?
That's something the selectmen would handle.
Yes. Well, I think that was the big thing, they were waiting for the actual letter. I know we spoke with the selectmen, you know, and informed them of it, but to actually have it in writing, they have to have that before they can move forward.
Right, and then we also are a part of that whole process as well.
Yes, that's true.
So how the process is, is that they come, anybody with a Town Bank form comes in and they interview with us, and then they go and interview with the selectmen, and we have a vote as well as the selectmen.
I don't think we have a vote, I think we get to recommend.
Yes, that's how I understand.
We have a vote, when somebody else a few years ago resigned, we all had a vote. I actually believe that you were on the select board at that time.
I thought the same thing until I checked with the town administrator who said no.
I think the vote is whom we recommend to the board. And sometimes also, I think they have in the past also done a joint meeting.
That's what we do.
Yeah, with the selectmen and the planning board. So we'll see how that process... That was, when did I talk to him? Yesterday, day before, because he was down in Florida and he was moving his office, so that's why he's been running around like a crazy person. But he did finally, he did get it in, he said. All right, well, we can move on to the agenda. Our next, our next item is the discussion of the Open Meeting Law Violation Complaint filed by Amy Troop.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was thinking about this, and I don't think we ought to discuss this until we've had an opportunity to talk with town council. This was a letter from the AG's office, and I think we should get some, get it out to town council and see if there's a recommendation. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Oh, I was just gonna say you want to put that in the form of a motion, or you want to further...
I'll put that in the form of a motion, that we contact the town council prior to discussing any open meeting law violations.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to forward the information to town council and find, you know, how we're gonna move on this, I guess is the best thing. So there's a motion and a second, I'll ask for a voice vote, Amy?
Abstain.
Myself, yes, Tom?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we can move on then to meeting minutes. First one is April 17th, 2025.
I didn't, I don't think I got them.
We didn't.
So, I didn't get any of them, so...
I didn't mean to.
There was a...
Yeah. Mine looks the same way.
Well, seeing that it's six pages, I'll accept a motion then to put off the approval of the minutes of April 17th, 2025, until everybody's had a chance to review them, and therefore recommend any changes, deletions, or corrections.
A second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor to hold off on the minutes to April 17th, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amy?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimous. Okay, the next one is May 1st.
I don't have that email, so...
Did you get this?
I have not gotten any of the emails, I made copies for myself when I got here.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we put off the meeting minutes of May 1st, 2025, and May 15th of 2025, until our next scheduled meeting.
Right, okay, there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Well, the May 1st minutes are, I have five pages, and the May 15th is three pages. So there's a motion on the floor and a second to hold off on accepting of the minutes for May 1st and for May 15th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous.
Was it seconded?
Yes, Bruce seconded.
Bruce seconded.
Okay, we'll do that.
Also, I was wondering, we had correspondence, and I was wondering why the chair didn't want to let that be on the agenda.
What correspondence are you referring to?
On the 27th of May, I received a correspondence from Michael Peasey on Mont Ponsett Street next door to the Fordite Project, the 266 Mont Ponsett Street, and I asked, I forwarded it to you then, and I have the email here that showed that, and I also asked to have it on the agenda before the agenda closed on Tuesday, and so there was two requests for it to be on, and it's not, and I really would question why we wouldn't be talking about this.
Well, I specifically asked to town council regarding that, and your request for a joint meeting, are you including that also, a joint meeting between the planning board and the selectmen?
Yes.
And I was informed by town council that the planning board and the board of selectmen, as well as the zoning board, do not have enforcement powers. If there's a problem with the site, and there's a, and they're having issues on the site, it's the duties of the enforcement officer, and that would be the building inspector. So the planning board and the board of selectmen, and to include the zoning board also.
I was actually referring to conservation because that's also Allen Diaz is on this correspondence here.
Okay, and again, I don't know what the enforcement powers of conservation is. I believe it still comes under the purview of the building inspector as far as enforcement goes, which is what I was informed, but I did see those pictures, and I do understand, I understand that one of the...
Wouldn't it be under the authority of the conditions?
One of the manholes had caved in, the sides had caved in, and one of the, and one of the drain pipes was blocked due to which caused the silt.
This is the property right next door to the building that's going up.
Again, like I said, issues such as that, I'm informed that it has to go to the enforcement person.
The neighborhood's really close.
We have no authority as the planning board to enforce.
I'm not asking that, but when a resident asks to have something on our agenda so that we are aware of it, then I think what should be on is correspondence.
I remember hearing something from Allen Diaz.
And for the last year, maybe longer, we haven't had any of the mail or correspondence listed. Usually we're supposed to have the mail that comes into the planning board office come to the meeting so that we can actually look at it and know what's going on in our town.
Do you have a letter there from Mr. Peasey, or probably emails coming from Mr. Peasey?
Is this it here?
Yep, there's a string of them. On May 27th, I forwarded it to everybody.
It was forwarded to the building inspector, or the planning board, or the board of selectmen?
No, this is from Highway and one from Concom.
I forwarded it to you...
So from Highway and Concom, did Mr. Peasey forward one to the planning board?
He sent me one, and I forwarded it to you and Danielle on May 27th, and then again on, what was the date, so the June 3rd, and I also called Danielle and asked for it to be put on the agenda, and she said she was gonna call you and ask for it to be on the agenda, or ask if you would allow it to be on the agenda. So I just wanted to know why we can't have correspondence that comes to the planning board meeting on our agendas.
Well, I can double-check with Danielle, but my understanding, I thought it was explained that requests such as that had to go through the administrative assistant in order to come into the board. Danielle, did we get communications from Mr. Peasey or anything directly from him, or in regards to the situation over there on Mont Ponsett?
No, nothing.
I sent that to you on May 27th.
Yeah, but he didn't...
I'm a planning board member, and when somebody in the town emails me and I forward it to you, it doesn't have to go to your email address.
And...
Her answer was it does, is that what she said?
Yeah, and so...
Did she explain that to you?
How is it that, so we're elected members of the planning board?
I know, but there's a protocol that has to be followed, and just because that's what we want to do, did you, did you...
When did we, when did we accept that protocol?
Was it forwarded to the administrative assistant, the way we have to process it?
Well, if somebody emails you and you tell Danielle you can get it on the agenda, if somebody emails me and I email it to you and Danielle, you do not let it on the agenda.
The first thing I do is tell them to send it to the administrative assistant, and then it would be directed to the proper enforcement person, which would be the building inspector at this point. We have no power as the planning board to enforce any of the conditions.
I'm asking for correspondence to be on our agenda.
Right, I understand that, you said that.
I'm not asking to be an enforcer, I'm asking to represent the people who want their emails.
Right, and if he wants to make an appointment and present himself here at the, at the planning board, we give him the same instructions, that he needs to go to the building inspector if he's got a problem on site, because I understand that he had a problem on site before, and the building inspector showed up on the site. That didn't come before the planning board either. I believe you were there also.
I was not there, but I did receive an email about it because they know that I'm gonna try and get it on the agenda.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Did the problem get taken care of, or did it get addressed? I mean, or is it still outstanding? I'm just trying to figure out where we're at with it.
The owner? He's not the owner.
No. Oh, oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, who's the owner?
He's not here.
I'm sorry?
He's not here.
Oh, so...
I'm just working for somebody who asked me...
Why would he be here if it's not on the agenda?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I thought, I'm sorry.
Why would he be here if it's not on the agenda?
I understand that, I thought you folks might have been there.
No.
Okay, I now know that, I did not know that before.
Well, no, why we're here?
I don't, no, you can talk to the chairman about that, but...
I know, I'm just asking if you want to know.
If you want to address the question to the chair.
No, no one that asked us the question.
No, I thought I was talking to someone else.
I understand that, but why would he be here if he's not on the agenda? Wait here so you guys don't beat up on her.
Oh, is that what it is?
He is.
Okay. Well, we're not gonna discuss that this evening.
You don't have to, I'm just telling them why we're here.
Okay.
All right.
It's the only one to know what she's talking about.
Any...
Yes, that's right.
Why not?
Any other business discussion, or any other items on schedule business following posting of the agenda? Other than that?
I think that we should have a practice, again, that each planning board member can contribute to what goes on the agenda because you're not, you're not allowing things to be on the agenda.
It's, it's not that I'm not allowing them, if they had a, excuse me? If they were told they had to go through the administrative assistant and process to put it on the...
When did that become a protocol? When?
Let's, let's solve this by reaching out to council and getting a directive. That's the only way we're gonna end this thing.
Why don't we do that, that's a good idea. We'll...
If you want that in the form of a motion, I'll do that.
Yes, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we inquire of council the proper procedure to get something on the agenda.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to consult with the town council, to find out the process or the change to the process.
I would like to have discussion.
In order to make an item appear on the agenda.
I would have discussion on the motion and the...
So there's any discussion, yes.
It needs to be clarified, the fact that we don't have, and it has to be in writing, and it has to have answers to the questions. What, why aren't we having planning board mail on our agenda? Why aren't we getting planning board mail sent to us? Why are we not having any files brought to the meeting? Why is it only the chair's responsibility to create the agenda when there is currently four members, but usually five members of the planning board? I don't, I believe that there is some discretion on whether or not something could be on there, but if somebody wants to discuss something that is an elected member of this board, there is not one member that holds over us that we can't discuss something, especially correspondence. So there needs to be itemized list, and I'm not taking any hearsay from the chair or anybody else on the board. I want to see in writing from them.
How about I amend my motion to see if we can get town's council to come to a meeting, and we can address all these things at a meeting with town council?
The only thing that I would say is that we probably should start looking at how much money we're gonna do when we should be running the planning board according to what the people elected us to do.
How about we do it according to the law?
Well, of course.
That's a good idea.
Of course, and I have no, I have no qualms about it.
Well, then, let's give, if you want...
But you're spending money on it when we already know how it used to be done. It's just changed over the last year and a half, two years.
What used to be done, and if in fact it was legal, are two different things. Let's find out what the lawful way to do these things is, and then we're all on the same page always.
I would also like the question to be asked, that does a town member have to email just the secretary or the administration where they should be able to contact one of us and as elected members of the board be able to send that information in? It should not have to only be directed to the administration?
We have two ways to go here. We want, if you want to offer up a list of things that concern you, as opposed to the general question, the proper way to do it, or we ask the attorney to come here. If you want to do a list, we can do a list and approve it at the next meeting and send it to town council.
If the planning board, if the building inspector is in fact the enforcement agent or person that would correct a problem, then yes, he should be emailed and notified. He's the one.
That's not what we're saying.
But our job isn't to oversee the building inspector to find out what it's doing or what he isn't doing, or what has to be done, but if you want to amend your motion, you certainly can.
That wasn't really what we were saying, we're talking about how we get things on the agenda for the planning board.
So what would your pleasure be? Would you prefer to have us send them a list?
This is transcribed, so the list can be sent to town council and it can be answered. It's a lot of money to come down from Boston if you can just answer the questions.
I'm not suggesting we make him come down, I'm just saying we have two ways to do this. And if you want to make a list...
Yep, it should be in writing, two of us, not just one person.
Is everything that concerns you, have you enumerated it all so that it can be transcribed? So we don't miss anything?
Well, I believe so, the minutes always are.
No, I'm getting it, I just, did you miss anything that you wanna have answered?
Does anybody else have anything?
I just wanna know the proper procedure to placing something on the on the agenda.
Right.
And that's the motion that's on the floor that's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a voice vote uh on the on the motion to uh to verify with the town council after the submission of the the list of things that are required for review and to be, and and the items and the procedure to place an item on the agenda.
Including mail.
Including?
Mail.
Mail. Uh, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Yes, absolutely.
Myself, yes, Tom?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Passes unanimous. We will find that out. Uh, any other items to discuss?
Just the next meeting date and motion to adjourn.
So, on June twenty-sixth, that's um because we usually would have met on Juneteenth and we can't that day, so it's June twenty-sixth, correct? And then just to prepare, uh, we we have a meeting on July third scheduled. Do you want a motion about that now so that we don't schedule anything for July third? Because I I I would probably think that we should move anything that would be on July third to a different date.
Yeah, which is
And just prepare now.
What's the next meeting date, what would that?
July twenty, I mean, June twenty-sixth.
No, no, I mean uh in July.
July third and then July seventeenth. So if we have one on June twenty-sixth
Well, I'm gonna be gone that week anyway, um, that first week in uh, in July.
July third or the twenty-sixth?
I'm gonna be leaving on the second.
Oh.
So, what if we just?
Meet on the twenty-sixth of June and then meet on July seventeenth and
Yeah, I I I think that makes most sense.
I I I agree.
I'll make a motion that we keep June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, um, and July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five and cancel July third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second?
There's a motion and a second uh to meet and reschedule those dates. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous.
Would you, would the chair entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that would be a good idea.
I will move the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.